We have two minutes for the clock, so.
Good, now we have Eric.
Good evening, welcome, and I'd like to call to order the North Bend City Council Regular Session Agenda for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 6:58 PM here in the council chambers. We're going to begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please help me with Detective Sergeant Buddy Young, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the public safety staff? Good evening, I'll remind the counselors that pull their mics in closely, I think they're on Kaylee, we also have Counselor Prieston online, we have Counselor Gar Boden online, and then a few of the city staff. So, again, welcome, it's so nice to see everybody here this evening, in person. We haven't been able to have in-person meetings for a while, so we really appreciate you all being here. And we're going to begin this evening with some ceremonial items. We have several items of staff recognition, and I will go ahead and ask our police chief, M'Kola, to please come forward and help us with the staff recognition. And we can, we'll let you lead, and then when you're ready, I'd like to have the council come down and take a picture with each person, if that's okay with you.
Right, thank you Mayor, council members, welcome everybody in the audience. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize several members within the police department, from newer officers to obviously well-seasoned officers. We got a fairly wide range here. So we got, first of all, we got Dustin Parker, Dustin, if you want to come up. Dustin's currently our School Resource Officer. He's been with the department for obviously five years now, a little over five years. February 1st was his anniversary day, and how long have you been with the SROs?
This is my third year.
Third year with this SRO officer, and he does a wonderful job up there. He interacts and relates very well with the, with the students at the high school, he's very well-respected up at the high school, and does a great job. He's actually, in the month of April, gonna take a field trip with the band and choir down into California, on that field trip, not only to help supervise, but to just get that interaction with the, with the students of the school. So, this time Dustin, I'd like to offer you, or present to you a certificate of appreciation for five years of outstanding, excuse me, outstanding service to the city of North Bend. And again, this is awarded for your anniversary day on February 1st, as well as the city having a $25 gift card for it. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do each and every day, very appreciated. And the next, I have Officer Brent Gator. Oh, you want pictures, individual pictures, sure? Okay.
Because of the, the light stuff, we have to break it up, this isn't Hollywood.
Sure, city administrator, would you prefer us to do it individual photo now, or?
So the individual photos, we'll do that.
Join me in here. Congratulations.
Geez, no fog.
All right, ready? Okay, now before we start the next, I've got that photo, is there anyone that you've got here that you want to have a photo date? All right, congratulations.
Officer Brent Gator. Officer Gators has been recognized for 25 years of outstanding service to the city of North Bend and the North Bend Police Department. I personally have had the pleasure of working with Brent for his entire career. Although we are in different cities, we often worked together quite a bit, and I've always been impressed with, with Brent's ability to talk to people, communicate, get across, and do the, do the right thing for the right reason each and every time. So it's very appreciative that I get the opportunity to do this. I do have to plead my old age, as my one, number one goal today was to get down to Action Trophy and pick up his, his desktop plaque. At 5:15, I went, oh my goodness. So, what I do have here for you today, and you will have your acrylic beautiful plaque tomorrow. This is the certificate, it's redeemed for one crystal desk plaque currently being held hostage. Please see Chief M'Kola for the rest. Which is the, the verbiage that is on the plaque, and I'd like to read that, and it says, "25 years of outstanding and dedicated service, Officer Brent Gator." "In recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to the citizens of North Bend and the North Bend Police Department." And it's, has the date of February 12th, 2022, which have been 25 years with the city of North Bend and the North Bend Police Department. So I got this certificate, that you can bring that in tomorrow. And then from the city, $150 worth of gift cards.
Really, it's been a privilege for me to serve the citizens of North Bend. I've had many opportunities to go somewhere else, and I, I couldn't see myself ever going anywhere else. I always wanted to be here at this department. And I enjoyed working with Coos Bay Sheriff's Department, OSP. I, I so much enjoyed that, that I stuck it out, and I wanted to be here. So, I enjoyed serving the citizens of, of North Bend, and I will continue to do that, at least for a while. Anyway, I also want to say thank you to my wife, who has stood by me through this whole thing for the last 43 years, and the last 25 years in this career, and she is my strength. Along with my family, who can't be here today for medical reasons, but, thank you honey, I appreciate you very much.
Did you want your wife to join you? And, what's your wife's name?
Lori.
Lori, we have photographers up front here, so don't worry, you know, hand your phone off, no problem. All right, you guys squeeze a little, because we're, we're taking up a lot of lots of space here. Like wide angle.
Okay, don't go anywhere, we got more.
This is, is this one, buddy? All right. Go back in here, here. Can you do this so much faster?
Okay, next I'd like to recognize Sergeant Jake Holt. Jake is our, is our most current sergeant, was just promoted within the last couple weeks. He went through a fairly rigorous promotional process. It was very close between him and, and that's one of the other officers that applied for it. It's an honor to be able to make these promotions. Jake came to the city in 2015, July of 2015. Was born and kind of raised in Coos County, came up, attended SWAC, I believe. Got his degree, and started with the police department at that time. Since that time, he's been, he's work patrol and one of our field training officers. So he's, he's responsible for making sure that our new officers meet standards and are able to go out there and safely do the, the jobs that they do every day. I guess I could rip those off you and then put them back on. But yeah, this time I'd just like to recognize you, thank you, congratulate you. Look forward to you becoming a member of the management supervisor team with the, with the North Bend Police Department, and.
All right, can we jump on in for a photo? Did you have anybody here? All right. Wonderful, congratulations.
Okay, the next one is the big one. I know we, we really hoping to have this presentation or this gift, we'd like to present to Buddy, ready for his retirement party. But when you're trying to gather stuff from 44 years of service, it takes a while. And then you gotta kind of sift through it, because if we gotta put everything, or I think everybody that was at his party saw the stuff that Vicky, his wife, and his family laid out, there's no way in the world you can put everything, 44 years into a box. So we had to kind of pick and choose. So, before we get to that, though, I think we'd like to recognize Buddy with the plaque that the, that the city put together. And it says, "In recognition for over four decades of outstanding service to the North Bend Police Department, Sergeant Buddy Young for handling every task with uncompromised confidence and integrity, for being a positive presence on our team, and for providing such a meaningful service to the citizens of North Bend." It's got the date from 1978 to 2025. And then Kaylee, as she was going through, I've been doing this for a little bit, and I've never seen a personnel file the size of this guy. 44 years, and everything that this gentleman has done through his career, that's been documented on paper and, and letters of commendation and awards, and whatnot. It was literally two, two huge files. Kaylee went through and found this, which was your, your oath of office.
Oh, really?
And when you joined, in March 28th of 1978, is the date on that. So she, you know, the city would like you to have that, because there's, there's only one of those. Very, very nice.
That's cool. Good looking.
This is, for what, if some people don't know, this is what we refer to as the shadow box. And it kind of tries to get the, the person's entire career put into a small little box, and it's very difficult. So the, the plaque on it says, "To everybody young sergeant from 1978 to 1922, in recognition of 44 years of exemplary service as a law enforcement professional, your loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of North Bend, the North Bend Police Department sincerely appreciate them." And it's got the patches that he wore during his career. He was a member of the Coos County Emergency Response Team. I believe there was a US Customs ID card on here. He was a lieutenant at one, one point with the Department of Patrol Officer, Detective, a Sergeant. I could go on and on, this man's done everything, a whole lot of the rest of it. The one thing that, working with Sergeant Doyle, he had, he was kind of the, the person that kind of gathered stuff. So, because he had to go hit Buddy up and say, hey Buddy, what else you got, what else you got? But the claw, I can still remember early stories of Buddy saying, I still wish we had the claw. It's that little device in there, you just put it on somebody's wrist, and you just ratchet it up, and they pretty much cooperated. But it's got his, I believe his first badge that he had when he, when he started.
Thanks, that's pretty awesome.
You don't use the claw anymore?
No, 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 there's several devices, he still wants to carry.
I still carry old Hickory.
Buddy, on, on behalf of the council, there's no words to say, but thank you. We're so honored that you spent your, you know, 44 years, I'm serving the city of North Bend, and we just, we appreciate you so much. I think I can speak for everybody in the city, that we feel safer when you're around, period. So, thank you.
It's been my honor.
And I don't think we're quite getting rid of you yet, right?
No.
Get to see a little bit?
Right, I went from a regular down to reserve officer, I'm still waiting to find out what my new number is. I heard Dispatch got on the other day and called 306, and I almost answered. It's his number now, so. So what I'm doing is, is the background investigations and stuff for the office right now.
Yes, we, we convinced him to come back for a short period and take care of our many backgrounds, as well as co-member of our Reserve Police Department. We're gonna need that expertise and guidance, that we kind of rebuild that program and get it going again, and what it's gonna be.
I recently had the opportunity, or not the opportunity, the, the situation to where I had to make a comment, and my comment was, I'm a Buddy Young fan. Trust me, it got the point across.
Thanks, guys.
Can you come down and take a photo with you?
Sure.
All right, so.
Yeah, this woman's put up with 44 years of my genitiges, and then except that wasn't enough stress. My son Josh had to become an officer, been a state trooper, so. It's wonder she doesn't look like she's 100 years old.
Okay, and then if I can get one with Buddy, and she, you told me that.
Hey David, I think we gotta retake that one, I blinked.
It was.
All right, so, Madam Mayor, if you guys will take back a second, get the background, and I don't have to crop you out. All right, so on three, say, one, two, three, claw! That's a rap!
That's a rap.
This is a rap. Anybody else want to take a photo with Buddy?
Have him get real close to the computer screen.
We'll hold off for a second and take photos here, so y'all can bring in all your family and friends if you want.
Oh, wow.
Now we better take, take a break.
That's pretty awesome.
To our consent calendar here. For Unmuted, and here, we're still streaming live, and we still have Counselor Gar Boden, our attorney, Counselor Prieston all online. And I just want to take a minute and say, wow, that was pretty amazing. Let's see, who can do the math really quick, just on, you know, we have Buddy, and everybody knows him as Buddy, right? 44 years, 25 years from Brent Gator, and then another five years with Dustin Parkhurst. So really just a, you know, kind of a, a quick snapshot of people throughout their career, and I love the dedication. I'm always so proud of, you know, our public safety, and North Bend Police, and North Bend Fire. Such an honor, and I love seeing these like long years of service, and I knew that, that we were gonna get Buddy back somehow, just a little bit, right? So, it's very heartwarming to hear that he's going to be coming back in a part-time manner on some other projects. So, I think that says a lot about, you know, the leadership with our chief of police here, M'Kola, and the team that he's working on, and I'm just very, very proud to be able to be here a part of that tonight. I won't remind him that I was in kindergarten in 1978, the next time I see him, but 44 years, it's a really long time. So, we'll go ahead and continue on with the agenda tonight. We have several business items to take care of, and the next one is our consent calendar. Last night during the work session, we went through all of the items on the consent calendar. There was no items that needed to be removed or dealt with partially, so I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
All right, I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
I heard a first from Counselor Gall, and a second from Counselor Slater, is there any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye. We had ayes from both councils online, any opposed, motion carried. Next item of business tonight is we have public comments. I always like to take just a minute here and explain our public comment process. We do appreciate people who participate in public comment. And it's a special, essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak, and that's whether you're online or in person. Our city recorder will be taking care of the timer for us on that, and that's just to ensure fairness, no matter how many people are signed up. That is the amount of time that you get. Our governing body does take the input into consideration of the people who are giving public comment. However, in order to comply with Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of any action that's needed. So, we'll go ahead, and Kaylee, to our city recorder, did you want to begin with the online public comment?
I do not see them online.
Okay, all right. And so then that would take us to any, we have one person signed up for public comment in person. Okay. So I have a speaker registration here, it says Bitten Dugan, and this is a public comment, so thank you for coming forward here, Bitten. And did I pronounce your last name right, Dugan?
No.
Sorry, Dugan, Dugan, I apologize. Okay, so yes, if you want to just, there is a microphone there, just so people at home.
Can you hear me okay?
I think we're good, though, right?
Okay, I'm gonna just put my camera. Hi, my name is Bitten Duggan, I live at seven twenty-five South Fifth Street in Coos Bay. And I'm here on behalf of the Human Rights Advocates of Coos County, Word, and Mount Prophet, et cetera. I manage the Growing Fruit Program. We do advocacy for people on the street who fall through the cracks and all sorts of other things. Specifically today, I want to bring awareness that March is National Brain Injury Awareness Month. Sadly, celebrated all across the country. Just because it happens, but it's to bring more awareness to people that it happens, because it happened so many times and people aren't aware. And they get left out of the hospital, they have a brain injury, and then they get lost, and then it's just, it's just horrible. So I'm here today to, what is it, to ask your city council to do one of these. What are these called?
Proclamation?
Thank you, to do one of these proclamations about March. And so by next year, it's taken care of and all, because on the street, ninety percent of the people I work with. I work with hundreds of people who are homeless on the street or everything, ninety percent of them have had brain injuries. Most of them don't even know it, but they're compensating, compensating, it's a huge thing. So it's very, and so, I mean, I'll leave a little packet with somebody and then we can communicate further in the future. But I'll just read this thing, brain injury, oh, it's great, I don't have my glasses on, it'd be easier if I put them on. Brain Injury Awareness Month, recognize each March provides an important opportunity to bring attention to the prevention of traumatic brain injury, TBI. And to promote strategies to improve the quality of life for persons living with TBI and their families. TBI is caused by an impact or force to the head or body, or penetrating injury to the head affects millions of US persons every year. There's just more than my brain injury campaign going on, and I just don't know if our community is sort of organized enough to do it. Because people aren't together who have brain injuries. But there's this, and then, I mean, so I look forward to working with your city about this and also working with Coos Bay. But like, I mean, I don't know, I'll leave this video, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing.
Who would I, who's the city? Okay, great, and then, I'm sorry.
David Milliron.
Oh, hi, good to meet you, thanks. Okay, and then can I have, can I give you some stuff?
Okay, cool. Thank you, and that was our last public comment for the evening. We're gonna go ahead and move on then to our public hearing, and that is number five on the agenda tonight. This is on page forty-three of your packet, there is. This is for our proposed city fee updates, and this is again, like I said, on page forty-three of the packet. I do have a public hearing script that I'll be reading. Do we want to go ahead and to, I see our city finance director Jessica Tara here at the podium. Do you like to say something before we go into the public hearing, or do you?
Nope, I'm just prepared for my portion of this.
Okay, so to our city reporter, then I'll begin with this script, correct? Okay. Alright, oh, I'll now open, I'll now open the public hearing hope for the purpose of receiving public input and adoption of the twenty twenty-two master fee schedule. Do any of the council members wish to recuse themselves or declare a conflict, conflict of interest? See, the counselors and the chairman are saying no, and I do not say conflict of interest from Counselor Gleason or Counselor Gar Boden. Thank you. Tonight's sequence of events are as follows, we are going to have a staff presentation, public comment. We will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, council discussion, and then questions. Then we'll close the hearing, and then we'll deliberate to a decision. So I will go ahead, the city council will now hear from the staff, report from the finance director, Jessica Tara.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, each year, staff prepares a master fee schedule for council consideration and public input. This year's fee schedule presents a five point nine percent increase over the twenty twenty-one rates. This increase is based on the Social Security Administration's cost of living increase for twenty twenty-two, which is the maximum allowable under the city's charter. Notable differences in the schedule include fees listed under building code section, which are tied to Oregon administrative rules or state valuation tables. Secondly, pool leases were removed from the schedule and will be evaluated on a case by case basis. And it's also important to note that the public safety fee was not increased in this master fee schedule, and that fee remains at fifteen dollars. Included in your packet is a draft of the twenty twenty-two master fee schedule for your consideration. We might conclude my report.
Alright, thank you. We'll go ahead then and move on to the public comment portion of the hearing. At this time, the city council will hear public comment, please be advised that public comment is limited to five minutes per person. To our city recorder, is there any public comment on the matter? Okay, alright, then we can go ahead, if there's nobody signed up on that part, we will go ahead and move on the next line item, which is to close the public testimony. So I will go ahead and officially close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Now, this is the time for the counselors' discussion on this matter. Does any council, does any member of the council wish to ask any further questions to tonight's speaker, including staff? Or does any member of the council wish to comment on the agenda items? Please be advised that the questions and comments are limited to five minutes per counselor. So I'll open this up to the counselors, was there comments, questions, concerns? We were, thank you again, Jessica Tara, for your presentation last night, it was very thorough in the work session. We know that this is a process that we need to go through, and I think it was laid out pretty clear, so I don't have any questions. Counselor Gall, I see you down there, nothing from you?
No, kind of worry about what the cost of living index will be next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have Counselor Gleason and then Counselor Gar Boden on, I don't see hands from them either, so it's pretty straightforward. That the fees are going up with the, with the, taking out the two that she mentioned, and it's the cost of living index. Okay, well, if there's no further discussion or questions, then we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Since everybody is done discussing, that will go ahead and officially announce the public hearing is now closed, and the city council will deliberate to a decision. This brings us to the agenda item number six, which is our Resolution three three one eight. A resolution of the City Council of North Bend, Oregon, authorizing revising fees and charges for the master fee schedule for the city of North Bend. And I believe there is a suggested motion on the page sixty-two of your packet for this resolution. Or?
Forty, forty-four.
Forty-four. Yes, thank you. Page forty-four of your packet is the suggested motion, is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion, I move that the city of North Bend approved Resolution thirty-three eighteen, increasing all city levying fees by five point nine percent.
First from Counselor Richardson, and a second from Counselor Gleason. Is there any further discussion? All in favor then of that the city of North Bend approved Resolution three three one eight, increasing all city levying fees by five point nine percent? Please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Alright, motion carries. And then that concludes our piece of action items for this resolution, and it has now passed. That takes us to number seven on the agenda, which is council committee appointments, page sixty-one. Mr. Milliron, did you have some information on this?
Madam Mayor, council, based on research and advice from our city attorney staff that are representing the members to the property committee, the reappointed. The property committee members being Councilman Larry Bill Boden, Mayor Jessica Engelke, Councilman Tim Slater, and Staff Liaison David Miller, and your city administrator. To reappoint these members to the property committee as advised.
Okay. So I will go ahead and entertain that motion, is there a motion from the counselors?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint the members of the property committee, Larry Gar Boden, Jessica Engelke, Tim Slater, and Staff Liaison David Miller.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Richardson and a second from Counselor Gall. And Council President, were you reading that directly from the motion from the page? That was on page sixty-one. Sometimes I feel like the numbers jump off the page. Okay, so we had a first and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor of then reappointing the property committees to Larry Gar Boden, Jessica Engelke, Tim Slater, Staff Liaison David Miller, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, right, thank you. Then we're gonna go ahead and we've, is there anything else around sixty-two? I'm sorry, number eight on the agenda is citizen committee board and commission appointments, that's number eight for the evening. That is number sixty-two, and Mr. Milliron, can you take us through that real quick?
Madam Mayor and Council, this is citizen committee board and commission appointment. As stated, Madam Mayor, you have the option of being for potential nominees to the governing body for appointment. We have received two applications, so at this point, you can put one, both, or neither, or delay your choice.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and continue to review those applications and not make an appointment at this time. That, that was one of the options, right?
That's, that's your priority.
Okay. So I will go ahead and do that, and so if we delayed and, and I review those at another point, then we don't have to. We just move right on to the next item of the agenda, or do they need a motion to like, okay, thank you. I'll consider, I mean, I still take those into consideration.
Yes, yes, I think I can bring it forward to you.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay. Then we're, we've got some items on number nine for paving of sanitary sewer repair on Sheridan Avenue, that's page sixty-three of your package. We did hear from our public works director during the work session, got some details on that. And so the council would consider the motion to approve the repaving expense related to the sewer repair on Sheridan. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that we approve the repaving expense related to the sewer repair on Sheridan Avenue.
We hear first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Richardson, is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the repaving expense related to the sewer repair on Sheridan, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten tonight, this is the notice of intent toward the North Bend Municipal Pool Project Phase One. So we have a bid that came in, I believe.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, we advertise phase one, staff has thoroughly gone through this, because the deadline was at five o'clock yesterday. Staff has had quite a bit of dialogue today. I'm going to ask that our finance director, that our city reporter, and our public works director, please go ahead and come forward. I will tell you that I do have a staff recommendation that I've been turning with information before by our finance director in order to get this project done. However, that action will not be done at this meeting, tonight's action item would be to move forward on page one. With that said, if you would, go ahead and deploy.
Okay, thank you, very anxious.
Very simply from the contract end, because you'll get it from the pool director, city reporter, and then you'll get it from finance director. And I'll make a point that when you, we budgeted this for six hundred and twenty-five thousand, we approved the budget June of twenty twenty-one. Since that prior time, the price of diesel has gone up sixty-four cents, or sixty-four percent today. So we received a bid of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, which fifty thousand is contingency for unknown things, so it's actually seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, with some connectivity to allow that. Which is approximately twenty percent over our estimate in July of twenty twenty. In our review, it's a well-presented proposal. We think it's a fair price, they have a good project team put together, bidders that we expected, and I'll stop there, because that's, we think it's a fair bid.
Yep.
It was, although the number's even higher than we expected, the partners for this project are ones that are familiar with our pool and our systems. And we're able to give you a little bit more information today on some lead times, whereas they were telling us about twenty weeks on the boiler, it's actually looking closer to three to four. So other parts of the project will take longer, the timeline is gonna be a little longer than we expected, but the team that they've put together is top notch.
And Kaylee, have they, have they worked, the people who are applying for the bid, have they repaired other things on the pool before, you said they're familiar with it?
They have not, so the boiler repair is from our, our person that currently works on that, the floor. But the design team, looks like, Southern Washington, and works on the top pools in Washington, a pool that you've heard me mention before, William Shore Memorial Pool. And Cordangelis just did that big project.
Okay.
Which is a pool that's very similar in size and age and construction to ours, and in a community very similar colors.
Finance. Alright, from a budget standpoint, we had nine hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted for phase one, two, and three. Since this came in a little higher than anticipated on phase one, we'll have to do, we'll have to take a close look at our fiscal year twenty-three budget. And figure out how to balance that for phase three. At this point, we think we'll have enough funds available this year twenty-two for phase two, for phase two. And then we may have to consider some things like revising our, our spending plan for the coronavirus, our money. Or potentially taking from general fund reserves in order to support that, that third phase. We'll also though have rebates coming from phase one, so we anticipate getting that money in to be able to put towards phase three as well.
Yeah, actually, a lot of finance directors up here, and I just, I know that can be really difficult to kind of understand some of these big numbers, and so I just want to break it down for anybody who's listening. Because we, we do have the ballot measure that passed, that helps out with some funding, so I just, I want to make sure people understand like the different buckets of money that are coming together to pay for the pool. So can you just, I know that's probably a really big question, but if there's a way that you could kind of like nutshell it for people, because I think some individuals could be concerned and think like, wait a minute, didn't we pass the ballot measure, doesn't that pay for the pool?
So the ballot measure is specific to operating costs, so that is a bucket of money put into a specific fund for operating materials and services, your personnel costs, those types of things to run the pool day to day. And then the city's promise to passing that measure was we would take care of the capital piece of it. So we had some money in reserves, we had some money in the pool improvement fund that had been saved up. We used some of the coronavirus money, all to contribute towards these capital costs. So two separate buckets of money, as you mentioned.
Thank you for, I just, I know that that, there's probably people that are watching and very anxious about getting the pool open, so I want to make sure everybody understands like how we're putting this together.
And my understanding is that some of these improvements will then save us on our operating costs in that, that separate bucket of money going forward.
I think the rebate portion is big too, to understand, but we are gonna get some rebates back from, is it the power company, or is it?
The rebates are from Energy Trust.
I think we forgot to mention that staff's recommendation is to award the bid. I think we forgot to mention that staff's recommendation is to award the bid.
Okay. And to award the bid of seven hundred.
Seven hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen is the actual bid, but that doesn't.
There it is.
Okay, not always bad.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Millar, was there anything else that you've got your dream team up here on board?
You'll want to go into a motion first and then go to the discussion.
Okay. Okay, so we have.
Benefit of the Council, you write this number down.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars to West Coast Contractors for Phase One of the whole project.
All right.
I make a motion, we award the bid for Phase One of the North of the North Bend Sewer, the West Coast Contractors, for seven hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
Okay. I hear a first from Counselor Gall and a second probably from everybody here, but Counselor Gall. Counselor Gall, second, was there any, so is there any discussion at this point now?
So, yes, this is a very large number. Yes, there's a lot of escalation. I put out a, an open letter to our public, which was widely distributed, because we believe in transparency. There are a lot of things going up. I was at Leadership Cooze today, and one superintendent from Coquille had mentioned he had stopped about ten gallons of gas and what it cost them. The reality is the costs are affecting everybody. I think our Public Works Director put it best when he had said, it's very difficult to get contractors to bid on something when they don't know what the price of fuel, for instance, will be, or electricity to manufacture. And so I had someone question, it's like, why are you throwing power in there? Well, again, it's all part of manufacturing. It's about shipping. All of this plays in. And so no one has a sort of magic globe to figure out what's going to happen. The deficit here for all three phases, and keep in mind, when we went and got the generous grant, which we were very grateful from the Judith Anne Bowman Foundation, it was for three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so there are some additional things in this bid that's going to help us long term. But we still, for Phase One, Two, and Three, still have roughly projected from finance, the numbers are about two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the team's going to come back. The pool's credible. This governing body made a promise to the citizens, and you all made a direct into staff. So we are working the numbers. We're going to look, as the Finance Director said, at our coronavirus ARPA plant that you all approved and come back at some point. And then the Finance Director will then come back and work with you all to move some things. I was over on the SWAT campus today toward their beautiful new nursing facility. And if I quote everything correctly, they said they started that project fundraising in twenty thirteen, when the cost estimate was sixteen million. When it actually got built, it was twenty-five million. So that was a fifty-six point two-five percent increase. And so we are facing it. We're going to move as swiftly as we can. I give the staff incredible kudos for just literally shaking, I know they're tired of hearing from me. They read my face better than anybody, but we persevered and it's been a great team effort. So we're going to move forward on this with your vote. We have Phase Two out for bid, and then we'll go to Phase Three. And we're going to try to get as much of this resolved before any additional price escalation keeps killing us here. So with that said, and I'd be remiss if I'd say that what you're about to approve is more than the cost of a new fire truck.
Yeah, okay. So we, on the floor, we have, we have a first and a second. We've had our discussions. And unless there's any other discussions, then we can go ahead and take a vote. So all in favor of approving the bid of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars to West Coast Contractors to complete Phase One of the pool, and please say aye.
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 Got a Counselor Garboden and a Counselor Wilson. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. We're really looking forward to the updates on that. So we appreciate all of everybody's hard work. I wonder if Ralph slept last night thinking about that bid coming in. We'll go ahead and, and we do not have any executive session tonight. So we'll go ahead and move on. So there's nothing to report resulting in executive session either. We'll go ahead and go on to item twelve, which is our City Administrator's Report.
Thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. The report will actually get published tomorrow. I was in Leadership Cooze today, and so I'm behind, but I'll go ahead and give a verbal report on what will be in the report. Our Parks Department is working on new gateway signage for our southern entrance. So we are in the process of getting those bids. That's tied back to your strategic goals. The Parks Department's also working on an Easter egg hunt. It will be April sixteenth, starting at nine AM at Berry Road Park. And I am so thankful, the Parks Department reached out to the general public, and they have been stepping up to help and volunteer. And so again, civic engagement has been important in this council. And so we reached out to the public and they responded. On the finance side, they've been very aggressive and working long hours on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We call it the FY twenty-three budget. But it's underway. And so the next phase in that will be meeting with every single one of the departments to look at their ass and balancing that with available resources. The Fire Department, I can't say enough about the Fire Department of this past week. It just absolutely blown me away, even though I got hosed. And the guilty party is in the room, and I'll just leave it at that. But it started out with them escorting the bowling team to the Oregon State Championship, the bowling team. And it always warms my heart. That's hometown America's best. These are, these are things that these youths will remember forever. You know, or your city reporter has great memories of times that she'd go to state and, you know, they were escorted out of town in a good way. They also participated in an airport mass casualty exercise. Again, all about training. In fact, just this week, they were doing ropes training. God bless them for, they went across the northern spit and got way up there in those cranes and just gives me the EBTVs to be that 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 far up in little ropes. But they do it, they're professionals, and they collaboratively do it with other agencies. And then there was the OSAA three A tournament. I stopped by the Fire Department on Wednesday on my way home, because I was a little concerned that there was an awful lot of smoke coming from the Fire Department that should never be. But but there, there's the firefighters and and staff in back cooking hamburgers for every single one of the players and all the teams in town. And I don't think they get those hamburgers. They delivered them, and then they came back and they did their drills. So they also then on Thursday hosted the Vale Vikings. That was the hose incident. If you want to see it, go to Facebook. It's on there. But they gave them a beautiful Chinese food lunch. They had a lot of gifts for them, if you will, shirts, t-shirts, things like that. I will say that one of the Vale coaches did get so soaked after he got up to leave. There was a puddle underneath him in in the duty room. But they also then went and supported them at the games. They also played fire hose sort of water balloon ball fights. And it just shows you. And so as all that's happening, we were sharing that back with the City Council in Vale, Oregon, and Vale High School. So they actually were simultaneously being able to participate. And again, it's hometown America. So just great things. I I've been asked specifically, so I'm going to go very slow here. Finally, we will be hosting our annual pancake feed this year on April tenth, twenty twenty-two. It will be at our main fire station, eighteen eighty Vicerson, serving the famous North Bend Fire Department pancakes, ham, milk, juice, from eight AM to one PM. So our councilors, they expect to see you.
Free selfies with Sparky, too.
There you go. Oh, yes. And we are getting close to being able to reopen City Hall. We're still working through some of the State Departments. But more importantly, as you know, we transferred dispatch over to Cooze Bay, which means that we have actually known one on the first floor that's public facing. And so we have been working, we've been keeping the council updated, that we have been securing to the last area to be secure of these doors. So when there's not meetings here, this way, again, your police department's in here, you have staff in here. This way, no one comes in, hides somewhere, and you leave at night and you don't know that they're in here. So safety of our employees are important. And so we won't reopen City Hall until then. So we are finishing that. Your library director, just absolutely very impressive presentation today at Leadership Cooze. She did it with the the Cooze Bay librarian. You can see that there's a lot of fun between those two. And but the, I do want to say that the North Bend Public Library Foundation was approved a thirty-five hundred dollar technical assistance grant from the Ford Foundation, and that's set to allow them to hire a way of a marketing consultant to develop a brand package and public relations guidelines and some content templates. Again, it goes back and ties to their strategic goals, but also the council's goals on branding and marketing. And then Public Works, they're finishing up the Safe Routes to School work on Broadway. They're hoping to finish that out by the end of March. They're also trying to finish up Medrona, hopefully by March twenty-second, and work on cost. And the Streets Department, again, this is a great intergovernmental relationship. The Streets Department and Ralph, working with the Port Authority to clean up some of the porch property over on Hamilton that has become nothing but a stopping ground for homeless activity garbage trash. So the Port Authority has agreed to pay the disposal fees, and then we'll make sure that we clean up the property. It was posted trespassing, and those signs all got tore down overnight. And then Parking Downtown Enforcement will return March fourteenth. So anyone who has left their vehicle parked longer than the allowed time, so it's all posted out there, know that there's some two-hour limits. Otherwise, we are, I've got a meeting with Upput Works, Never Works, I think this week or maybe next week. But I I've gone over, met with their management. We've talked about the parking. We're all on the same page. They're communicating to the residents. But the hotel, which is, you know, been converted over to housing, is causing some issues. And last but not least, the Police Department has recently completed hiring process. Our HR manager went down the list of every single new hire. And she juggles that with her City Recorder duties, and they just finished up on a two thousand-plus-page open record request. So imagine how much time that takes. Should be, I think, next week or shortly thereafter. The first two new police cars with the new design will arrive. So we'll do an unveiling of those vehicles. The Police Chief worked with, is rank and file, and they all chose the design. We haven't released really to public that design. You all have seen it. The mayor very briefly showed you that rotary. But when the vehicles are here, we'll make a little fanfare, because all vehicles moving forward will have that look and feel. So I know that's a very, 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 very long City Administrator's Report, but there's a lot going on today. So thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. And again, we'll look for those online for, if you want more details, we appreciate you making those available to the public on social media and the city websites. I don't believe there's any committee reports. I haven't heard any. And many reports from Fire Department? No? We'll go ahead and then we'll go ahead and go on to Council Comments. And let's see, we'll go ahead and start with Counselor Richardson.
Okay. I met some really nice people this last weekend that were that were here for the three A tournament. Actually, their daughter and family have come and played in the tournaments for the last four years, and they actually just came to watch, which is really, really interesting to me. But obviously, that's such a wonderful thing that this community is putting out for these people, that they're willing to come back and spend money in our community just just to watch. What, that that makes, that's that's really, really nice. One thing that came up this weekend, Administrator Millar and myself and Kathy Brown from the DEQ are gonna have a meeting this Friday, because North Bend runs over ten thousand people, which totally changes the
Requirements.
requirements for recycling in our area. So stay tuned. There's gonna be some interesting new things coming up for recycling in our area. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. No more after this meeting that we have, and we'll I'll report on that when we meet next time.
Okay.
That's really all I have.
Counselor Gall, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah. I mean, just to, just to dovetail onto this three A deal. We've, between me and Liz and the Earblies, we've hosted, I mean, hosted Big Ten. A team ever since this thing came to the Bay Area. I think it's our twelfth year. And and luckily, we've had the same team about eight or nine years of that. And so we stay in total contact with the coach and some of the, some of the assistant coaches during the course of the year. And they even come here at time or two to to pick up games with with local teams, just because they like coming to to North Bend, or I push North Bend instead of Bay Area. But anyway, it just so happens that, you know, and when I say host, we we take them to a couple of breakfasts, and it just so happened that this year our team won the state tournament. And we were right in the middle of, I mean, the, all the players know us by first name. And we, the families, we invited the whole families of the of the fans from, well, it's Cascade Christian is the team. They're located in Metford, and they had quite, quite the the traveling fan groups with them. And so we invited them all to the back alley after the game, you know, back in my prime, we'd have been probably pounding them down. But anyway, the the fans came, we would put pizza in front of them. It is, it is an unbelievable, just like Bill said, some of these, some of these fans, you know, they'll tell you, you know, and and this team, the the coach of Cascade Christian has been the coach for thirty-four years, ever since they developed a basketball team. And they've been to state playoffs in Pendleton. They've been to state playoffs in Baker. They've been everywhere. And nobody puts a deal on like Cooze Bay and North Bend. I mean, it is, it's unbelievable. I I seen David there. I got to meet his wife. His wife was a volunteer at the door and 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 I finally got to meet her. And I said, well, nice not just seeing you in a picture on the wall and in your husband's office. But I got to, you know, BS with her a little bit. And and it is, it is an unbelievable event. Now, this this weekend is the four A tournament, which is just kind of a, just kind of a feeling. And I I don't, I mean, there was a lot of lobbying to get the three A tournament here. And and it it's such a a big event that that's where we need to keep it, you know. We are gonna do a special four A deal, just because the big cities felt they had too much COVID. So it was either that the big cities felt they had too much COVID, so it was either that or they weren't gonna have a tournament. Uh, just so happens Marshfield four A, and they're in the tournament, so just think of the math of keeping both of their teams in town versus getting motels everywhere. I mean, it, it, the, the stars lined up for them to have it here this year, but I think it's just a one, one-hit wonder, but then I've got a touch on, you know, on Buddy's deal, I, I think about that. He joined the North Bend Police Department nineteen seventy-eight. Me and Ralph Dunham over there graduated in seventy-seven. So probably during football season, there was a few beers or something had, and we were probably trying to ditch Buddy by the time, so anyway, uh, nice job, Buddy, really, so that's all I got.
Yeah, good. Well, I, this would be a, a good segue to go to Counselor Slater's comments, because I bet he could touch into even on the economic impact of the, of the three A tournament, because I think, did I hear correctly, Counselor Slater, it's about a half a million dollars?
Yeah, and, and, and actually, the reason they're here is because of uh, people like Pat and, and how the communities responded. We make it very special for the teams, very special for the coaches, and uh, they're really honored to be here, and I think they've responded, grown that way. Uh, and, and it produces about half a million dollars, and not only lodging, restaurants, gas, and, and all the other stuff in the area, so it has a significant impact that way, but they're here because of how you treat them. And, and that's how, uh, that's how the four A came, it's sort of like, well, you guys do such a great job. How, how about could you help out? And uh, as, as you well pointed out, Pat, that uh, this is sort of a filler in to, to help take care of them. Any, and a couple more things?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd say, this is still Tuesday?
Yeah.
The mayor was at Rotary today, talking about development, did a nice job giving the presentation of look at the things going on, look at the things we got around us. And, and I think that whole idea of, uh, well, yeah, we'll do something someday is now well past, we've got things in order, uh, focus of the council to achieve those things, focus of staff to find the monies to do that. It came across very well, and that was presented well. Uh, we also had in our presentation yesterday from uh, uh, Tim Hyatt of the Charleston Merchants Association talking about a county measure six dash one ninety-four, and that would establish a very limited uh, area for a visitor, uh, visitor lodging tax, which would cover Barview and Charleston area and out to Shore Acres and that. And what that does for the people in there is it enables three things to happen. One of them is they become a contributor to the overall uh, advertising in the area. Currently, we have about eight hundred thousand that we use to advertise the area through the BCB. This would push it over a million dollars and try to give us some equal footing to those on the North Coast, which we have much more to be attracting, but they get Portland people dropping in, so they've got more money in that. The other thing it would be, it enables them to put together a decent visitor center. They've sort of, there was a little laundry thing that they revamped, and it actually looks like a large bathroom. But they redid it into a visitor center, and this would enable them to, uh, with a certain degree of money to uh, actually redo a larger area, which could also have some meeting room space for the community activities and things going on. And then that's seventy percent, and the other thirty percent would simply cover, go to public safety. Uh, yeah, looking at, uh, trying to take care of the needs, maybe code enforcement, some other things that way. So it's a very good product, those that would be regulated, uh, those at lodging and the RV sets and whatever are in favor of it, those that uh, businesses that, that are part of it in that area really support it as well, so, but it has to be voted on countywide. So uh, my idea is, you know, take a look at it, it's, it's a good deal for promoting this area and getting more people here during those times of, of tourism base that we have. Phase one piece, excited about that, you know, when we passed that, when you passed that five-year uh, levy, the whole issue was that's gonna operate things, and we're gonna come up with the monies uh, to be able to do the capital improvements and the capital developments. And you've seen a lot, if you've listened a bit, that the staff has come up with grants, uh, programs and other mics, which has been funneling those monies in to meet that. So this is another part of our commitment, uh, in our partnership with everybody in the city to make that pool an asset out into the future forever and ever. Uh, at least next forty years, fifty years. Uh, so that's real exciting, and I appreciate David and the work and Jessica and the uh, the materials which have come through that way. And then the latter ladies were doing Buddy Young things. Yeah, I appreciate all the work and time and that goes in reflecting. He, he was here about three years when I joined the council. Been a while, my goodness.
Great, thank you, Councilor Norlough, we'll go to you, and then we'll see if the Council of Cleveland and Council of Darbonne are still there.
Well, I, I think it's wonderful that everybody's so involved with the tournaments, and I, I think that the pool, that's, I'm glad that there's a green light. Finally, you know, that we got a bid, I mean, that's, that's just so gratifying after all the work that's gone into it. Looking forward to the pancake feed, I go every year, and it's a cause, and uh, so I, I just, I'm happy to hear all these good things happening, so it's good.
Good, good.
And, and kudos to Buddy Young, that's extremely impressive, and he's just, he's so calm and, and talented and skilled that I hope that, you know, the detectives, detective jobs is not an easy job at all. So he's, he really has my respect, absolutely, so.
Thank you. Counselor Pleason, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, it's exciting about the pancake feed, when I was a much younger uh, lad, I once stood elbow to elbow with uh, Counselor Goll and cooked ham while he uh, cooked pancakes, um, when I was in junior high, I think. So that's fun, I think it's gonna be cool to see everybody back and doing that. Uh, it's David's comment about the um, escort out of town, I, I, those things are so much fun. Um, the only escort I ever got at the uh, city line was when Buddy Young pulled me over in high school. Uh, it was probably still to this day the best experience I've ever had being pulled over, so that's, um, he would, he's, he's gonna be missed, it's, I went to school with his, his boys and, and I wasn't born when he started. So, I mean, he, he started before I was ever a, a human, and, and he's, he's done it for a long time, and and uh, his, his experience and institutional knowledge is gonna be missed, I'm glad he's gonna be sticking around for a little while.
Counselor Darbonne? Got nothing, okay, thank you, don't wanna leave you out. Um, got all the counselors, and um, I have a few comments. First of all, um, I do wanna introduce this young man that's sitting here, this is actually Buddy Young's grandson, Keegan Young. And um, not only has um, Keegan came tonight to support um, his grandfather and his retirement, but he has, um, he's interested in politics and city things, and I actually, in my other job as a teacher, got to speak to his class, um, it was a history class that we spoke at, with Mr. Hood, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and so, um, you know, he can now hold this ahead of his family that they all bailed after the meeting. And he has sat here for the last hour, um, understanding how city public works, um, and uh, you know, resolutions work, so. Um, nice job, Keegan. So, and if you're all interested in helping out at the pancake feed, just turn around to the chief there, and he'll probably take uh, take your name down. Yeah, good, so I do appreciate that, and we always look for different ways to get the youth involved in the community, so I'm really glad that you're here. Um, and um, you know, the, when you guys talk about the basketball tournament, like it actually like brings tears to my eyes, it's so cool because like, I get it that, you know, the Galls know that family in Metford. Um, and so when you really think about the connections that we make, you know, you are North Bend to them, um, and that, that says a lot, so I appreciate that. Um, and um, uh, my other comment to, um, oh, so the four A is coming. Um, I did speak at Rotary today, uh, Counselor Slater was my lead man over there. And um, this was, we were able to speak about the economic renaissance that's happening downtown North Bend. Um, I, earlier, uh, in the year in January, um, the mayor of Kuzby and I both gave kind of State of the Union addresses. Um, and this was more focused on the development of downtown. So, um, you know, if you are a social media user, we've been plugging all this stuff out there about, um, what's going on with the facade grants. You can see the pictures, and you can see it happening right before your eyes. Um, and so one of the things that I talked about is the URA Development Assistant Grant is helping Wildflower Cafe. Um, so coming soon, we will have our first brewery in North Bend. So they're doing a public house, I think they might be starting with guest taps and then go into beer. Um, but uh, follow, follow, follow what's going on down there, um, on our website um, and our Facebook page, so you can see updates of the reservations, or just walk on by. Um, they're doing a project right now in that particular building where they're collecting mason jars for um, a, uh, something that the community can be part of, so if you have any extra jars, go down to Wildflower Cafe, you can do it. And um, I'll go ahead and I'll share this online as well through, um, some social media, so you can see the, the full presentation that we did um, today at Rotary. Um, I want to also, um, I'm gonna read, I'm not gonna actually read it now. Um, but I have an announcement to make that, um, North Bend's Patchook Pierce, um, got a hometown hero shout-out at the Oregon Capitol. And um, Boomer Wright, um, on his last day, it was like the, one of the, the last hours, um, on the House Representative floor, um, he spoke about lifelong North Bend-er, um, and dedicated teacher, um, Patchook Pierce, who spent decades teaching in the North Bend and then retired nineteen ninety-one. So she has a special birthday coming in April, so I'll go ahead and take the time then, um, in her birthday month to read what he wrote. But I wanted to let you know that he did that, um, and spoke about, um, Pat and all the wonderful things that she's done for, um, our community. She was my advisor when I was a July Jubilee Princess, um, back in the nineteen ninety-one. So, um, we really, um, were honored that Boomer Wright took the time to, um, honor her, and so we'll save that for her special birthday month, and I'll read that in detail. And um, so, congratulations Buddy, congratulations all the officers that were here tonight, um, and really, um, their families. We know how much that they are dedicated to, um, it's, it's a partnership. When you're an officer or firefighter, it's a partnership with your whole family, so we appreciate that. We do have some other business items, so don't go anywhere. Um, number fifteen on the agenda, this other business, and there's two items here, I believe there's an authorization um, to sign a contract for a canopy, um, employee assistance program. And um, we'll go ahead and look here, um, in the packet, is there, there's, it's again, it's an authorization to sign a contract for canopy employee assistance program. That's A, under other business, and will we provide any information with that?
Um, so Mayor, you should have a copy of it standalone, and uh, this is simply a change in company name. Uh, so we have to issue a new contract, there's no additional impact to the city. Um, so it's a step recommendation that the government body goes ahead and authorize the city administrator to sign the updated contract for the employee assistance program, uh, services with canopy.
Okay, all right, well, I would entertain a motion for the city administrator to sign an updated contract for employee assistant program services with canopy, is there a first?
Which is a lot easier when you say so.
Yeah, no kidding.
I would move that we authorize city administrator to sign the updated contract for the employee assistance program services with canopy.
Thank you, Counselor. And a first from Counselor, um, Slater, and a second, um, from Counselor Goll, is there any discussion about this? Good program, it's just basically some paperwork needed, so. No further discussion, I'm all in favor to authorize the city administrator to sign the updated contract um, for the employee assistance program service with canopy, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item B, under other business, is approval of a little theater on the Bay Main Street grant application. You should have, um, two documents here, one that has a city of North Bend letterhead on it, um, and um, then the Little Theater on the Bay phase, phase that's at eight, eight, application. And Mr. Miller, this, we are able to help Liberty Theater apply for this because of the Main Street Program that's at press.
So, just, uh, for the council, so, um, when we move forward with the creation of the Main Street Program, uh, which, uh, we've advertised for the Main Street Manager, uh, we'll review five applications, uh, HR has reviewed those, and uh, so we will interview the candidates and hire. However, under the state eyes, um, the next phase, uh, which, uh, the city reporter has updated the application for volunteer, is that you will then actually get applications for board members for the Main Street Program. Uh, we had a great opportunity, uh, in that the state, uh, through the Main Street Program allows us every two years to apply for up to two hundred thousand dollars in, uh, projects in our downtown Main Street, uh, portal. Uh, the state did, uh, North Bend a huge favor, and actually did a pre-application review and came back with a couple notes. One of the things they said was, since you don't have an existing Main Street Board, you have to get a letter of support from your acting board, which is the council, until you appoint a board. Um, as you recall, when I came before you on the Main Street Program, um, at this point, the state's allowing us to operate as a city managed um, for probably the next three years, with the goal that eventually it becomes its own independent uh, Main Street nonprofit, pretty much like a merchants association, but different focus. The nice thing is, is that the, uh, there's been overwhelming, uh, interest in folks serving on that, uh, Main Street, uh, board. So you have in here the draft application. Uh, the city contracted with, uh, CCD Incorporated, uh, to actually write the, uh, application. Uh, they've been working, I've been the staff liaison, um, on filling staff information, and then Liberty Theater has presented, and myself and our city planner actually went and met uh, behind closed doors as to what they plan to do with the money. We have deliberately not walked away with any photos or anything that would spoil it for that, but, um, it's gonna knock your socks off. So the request, there is no financial impact to the city. The URA has already front-loaded the money, if you recall, the URA Board actually had taken action to go ahead and release the file, okay? So there are some matching requirements. Uh, you'll notice in the application that they have private funds, and then of course, they have other funds. This is simply saying that you, in your capacity as the acting Main Street Board, um, will allow the Main Street Program, which I'm currently the acting administrator, to actually go file and try to get, uh, this project funded for them, uh, which is, uh, phase eight of that project.
So you're saying at this point, um, we just, we need a motion to authorize?
Um, it would be authorizing the mayor to, uh, sign the letter of support, uh, authorizing the submittal of the Main Street Revitalization Grant on behalf of the Liberty Theater.
Got that, Counselor? That, that, that suggested motion wasn't written anywhere, is it? He's got the good memory. All right, we might have to have you say it one more time. Okay, Counselor, Council President, are you ready?
All right, so, are we ready? Uh, sure, go for it.
To, uh, approve the grant application from Little Theater on the Bay for, for Main Street grant application and authorize a letter of support to be submitted with the grant application.
Still a lot of words.
And authorize a letter of support.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, uh, Little Theater on the Bay's Main Street Grant Application and authorize a letter of support.
Authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support. Okay. All right, I hear a first and a second, is there any discussion?
It's exciting.
It's great, this is great, very good news.
Port Authority's had a Main Street Program for about fifteen years, I think, and they've done a lot down there.
Yeah, okay, so we had a first and a second. Yeah, okay, so we had a first and a second, then all in favor of authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the grant application for Little Theater on the Bay. Please say aye. Any, aye, thank you, thank you, any opposed? Motion carries. That was our last item of ever other business, so if I'm not seeing any, right? Then it's 8:28, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.